Hey guys, is everybody here?
We are, we are. Good to see you Scott.
I'm here.
Good to see you Dawn, how are you?
Good.
Okay, well we got all participants are... and then Luis won't be able to make it tonight, I guess he had an emergency.
Yes.
Okay, well if everybody's ready to go, let's start, is everybody ready?
Ready.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and go ahead and call to order the regular planning commission meeting. For Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. Wanna start with a pledge of allegiance, could please? You guys ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which is mission under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, can we have a rule call please?
Yes, David Maderas?
Here.
Nolanda Delgado?
Present.
Shirley Brewer?
Here.
And Luis Conchenas, excuse, Scott Freels?
Here.
Thank you, we have four.
Fantastic. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda? See any chat, please? Nothing?
I don't see any hands raised.
Perfect, we'll move along. Don, are there any informal project reviews?
No, no applications for informal plan reviews, chair.
Great. Okay, now we're at the consent agenda, we approved the affidavit of posting, approved affidavit of posting public hearing notice. Does anybody wanna pull anything, or are we good to approve the consent? Anybody? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the affidavits. That's for where is it, where, the section, or item B, item A I should say.
Okay, A and B, the, under the consent.
A and B, right.
Yeah.
My second.
Alright, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Alright, awesome. Public hearing items, consider a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from industrial to public facilities, and zoning map amendment to public facilities of the city well 6 and underlying point 7. Located at the corner of 45 San Juan Hollister Road, APN is 002/550/009. And we got staff, I'm sure we have a staff report on that one, don't we?
You bet.
We do. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So, this is very similar to the Coke well rezone that we talked about almost three weeks ago. This is the other side of the project, the parcel that the city acquired from Dale Coke for the well 6 use. So it's very similar. And let me just get this going here. This parcel is located at 485 San Juan Hollister Road. Parcel number as Chairman Freel said is 002550009. And it is currently zoned industrial, whereas the Coke well was zoned public facilities and chanked to industrial. This one is industrial and will be changing to public facilities. So it's a general plan amendment to change the underlying land use designation, and a zoning map amendment to change the zoning designation again from industrial to public facilities, so that it reflects the city and public facilities use that is going on. As I mentioned earlier, this is the opposite action of the Coke rezone project, which will complete all required parts of that land swap agreement that was executed in August of 2018. During that agreement, again, the city purchased the well 6 site for city use, as well as the underlying acreage. And as I briefly covered, that entailed a granting of five sewer and water connections for the well 3 property. And the Cokes acquired well 3 and the underlying 7.3 acres.
Okay.
This, this map is similar to the other ones, but as you can see, it's a different parcel. This is now the parcel that is going from, this should say industrial, but will become public facilities. And this map apparently has the same error. Again, it would be going from industrial to public facilities. It's not gonna stay the same, and I apologize for not catching that. The project is exempt from CEQA under section 15061B3, which is the common sense exemption. That can be used because it does involve an equal exchange of land, and if approved, will not result in a change in an increase of industrial zone property. That should be public facilities property because of the swap that the Cokes did. Again, just to remind her, the rezone of the Coke well 3 lot was reviewed by the planning commission on November 2nd, 2020, and was subsequently approved by the city council on November 17th. So the first section has been done, completed, and approved. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission, I'm sorry, recommend that the city council adopt resolutions to change the land use designation of the well 6 property from industrial to public facilities, and change the zoning designation from industrial to public facilities, as well as recommend approval of the ordinance, which is required to change the zoning, which I believe is in your pack. And I believe Trish sent out a correction on that as well. And with that, that does conclude my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you David. Any questions? Shirley, any questions?
I do not have any.
Nolanda, anything?
No, I do not have any.
How about you David, anything? David? Mute. David, I think you're on mute buddy.
Are you, am I here now?
There you are.
Okay, is, is well 6 connected to the city?
I can answer that, if I could see myself.
I believe that well 6 is connected to the city, but I'll let City Manager Reynolds talk about the current status of that well.
Thank you, that's it.
I'm sorry, I'm, I can't unmute. I'm frozen.
Okay.
Sorry.
Dawn, did you wanna tell about the status of well 6?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're kinda waiting for, but it kinda went blank for a minute there.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, now I see, it looks like he's frozen.
Yeah, I'm frozen.
Yeah, my iPad froze just a few seconds ago also. Oh, what a man.
Still frozen.
I don't know if he knows he's frozen.
He does.
I'll, I'll try to answer it, from my understanding, but we'll get the final word from Dawn. Well 6 was connected to the city, I don't know if the city is still using well 6, because it ended up testing high in nitrates after all, and does require some supplemental treatment.
Yeah, that's what I understood also.
I can't.
Great.
I can't close it.
Okay, any que-
Okay. If I close the program, we all die, I'm the host, right? Cheapers. This is the city's internet connection at City Hall. Hmm. I'm gonna have to. It's not gonna let me do either, apparently. Close the program, or wait for the program to respond. So... Text to David. Okay. So that doesn't work, that doesn't work, and that doesn't work. Cause we're into control alt delete mode. My favorite mode. So what do I do, just kill the whole computer? Yeah. How do you do it? That's never happened before. Every meeting special. There's the Napolicoast, okay. If you yell loud enough from your house, you can hear your fellow commissioner in this little town. Alright, the device is ready. Wow, Zoom doesn't even pop up as an icon. That's a competition. It's, it's connected. Gosh, it's still really unresponsive. Oh hey. Hey, I found you guys.
Hey, Dawn!
How's the meeting going?
You got there running around cyberspace?
It's lonely out there.
It's almost over.
Good thing I had my helmet on.
It's, uh, we're up to the, uh, the action item, the approval of Franklin Park design.
Okay.
So if you're ready, you're up.
Okay, thank you David for that presentation, and yes, well 6 is up, but it's suffering from nitrates, so we're not using it currently. Okay, very good. Yeah, share screen, there you go. Oh yeah, wait a minute, Scott, did you take votes?
I'm two rounds up.
Yes we did, Rochelle recorded them. She's got the, the, the numbers for that, and the, oop.
God bless Rochelle.
Thank you Rochelle.
Hey Rochelle.
I gotta get my PowerPoint real quick, that's all.
Teamwork, this Zoom is building teamwork.
Well, we've, we've got a good team, very fortunate. Okay. This computer is just really slow today. Why is it downloading this? It should already be there. Wow, this is, this is sick. It's loading PowerPoint again, okay. Okay. Now, open that up. Share screen. And come over here and share. There we go. Okay, you guys can see this, right? Over.
Yep, yep, finally public hearing, there you are.
Okay, great, great. Yeah Rochelle, thank you, and Rochelle's part of this presentation, so this is great. When I first arrived in San Juan, I, I met a resident Mary Morales from Franklin Circle, and she showed me this wonderful design for a park there, and asked me why it never got built. Of course, I didn't know why it never got built, and I looked into it. And so, we resolved a title question that we had from the 1960s, from the original development. It's not exactly a parcel, it's a piece of right of way. And I had a title company do all the research on that, to make sure that we had a right to claim it, and we do. We're co-named with the original developer, a guy by the name of Homer Barthello, who was the mayor as well as the developer. Anthony's uncle, I think. Supervisor of Barthello's uncle. So, so once we got all that settled, we got to work, and, and, and put this design in play. We hired a great, a great architect, and Geneki and Associates, and we got to work on this little park. And Rochelle knows the history better than I do, she lives there, and I can let her talk about it and move forward from here. And Rochelle, I'll just rotate the slides as we go, I've got about four slides from your city council presentation.
Perfect. I think everyone is somewhat familiar with it, so I just wondered if there are any questions on it? This is the original design by Jimmy Martin, he's another resident here. And this is the second option, and then the other one is the one, this option 1 is what the residents here voted on, and was unanimous, 5-0 for this design. Those of us that could vote anyway.
So, could you describe the features for us?
Um, yeah, the, there's an ADA ramp that was added on the side opposite from the intersection. There's a barbecue pit in between the top two trees there, and then three picnic tables kind of underneath the trees there. Just below that are two raised garden beds, whether it's flowers or vegetables, yet to be decided, with a little lawn area, and then you can see the bocce ball court. There's a little white square down in the bottom corner, that's where the storage is for the equipment. And then there's kind of a circle underneath that tree that is the existing fire hydrant.
Cool.
That is about it. I think the next slide shows some of the options as far as trees and
Oh, I didn't go that far.
Other amenities go.
I didn't go that far, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, that's something down the road, once we get all the major pieces in place.
Hi Rochelle, I'm sorry, I missed everything kinda locked up when you were talking about something over by the bocce ball court.
Oh, there's a little square that is for storage of the bocce equipment, various balls, and then there's a existing fire hydrant.
Yeah, they all work, okay.
A question Rochelle, that Becca wanted me to ask was, is there gonna be a light post?
Uh, I don't see any light posts in the images here, no.
Because we have them stealing the fire hydrant cap?
Oh, are they? Uh, no, I thought that they were stealing the sewer.
No, the cap, so the fire, fire.
Fire hydrant was also taken?
Yeah, so is there going to be a light put there? That's what I was, that was, Becca asked me to ask.
Um, all of the lighting in Franklin Circle, or electricity I should say, is underground. There is a light near that point of the triangle. They would have to go through the street in order to add electricity. I don't think we've explored that option.
Solar?
Oh, solar could work as well, I think, yeah. Again, we didn't explore any lighting options.
Yeah, okay. No.
I have a question there. It starts there, it says that the land was surveyed by Mr. Martin's design and was modified. Was, what was modified to be the?
Um, if you go back to the black and white drawing, the previous slide, that there, that was Jimmy Martin's original design. So, similar in that he had the bocce court on the same side, he had the lawn and the barbecue swapped, basically. And he's put more shrubs and things around, kinda under those larger trees that you see on the short end.
So, we wanted to bring it to city standards, if I could just interject, and so-
What's that?
So we wanted to make sure we had handicap accessibility. So that was a big one for, for me, to make sure that we met our standards. Yeah, and, and then I noticed the architect put the picnic benches under the trees for shade. So using the trees for shade, as well as, as well as aesthetics. Alright, so if you go, see how the benches are under the trees there? And there's five trees versus four. Versus three. What, was this area, did this have a special use Rochelle?
Uh, just low shrubbery.
I don't think anybody can hear me, but I'm, I can't, everything locked up?
Oh no, now we lost the chair.
One thing that the Public Works said that by the fire hydrant, there's that tree option. They weren't too keen on that, they thought it might interfere with the the fire hydrant. And so, possibly not having that fourth tree there.
Where's that?
That's something towards the end, once we're planning the things.
So would you replace that with just the shrubbery that was in the black, you don't have the tree there?
Potentially, yeah. I personally also have a flagpole that I would like to donate.
I can't hear anything, it's, I can see the changes on the screen, but I can't see, I can't even hear anything. So what should I do? Should I log out and try it again?
That's what I had to do. I had to shut down. Oh, he can't hear anything.
Alright, I'm gonna reboot, I'm gonna shut it off and come back.
We're hanging out.
Rochelle, are you still, can you hear me?
I can, Mr. Fur.
There's a picture that we have, a colored picture of a, of an outdoor kitchen, is that still something that you're gonna do there? Are you just gonna do a simple barbecue pit, or what's the configuration of that?
Um, that hasn't been decided. There were, I think, just a few different barbecue options on another page.
Did you get that Scott?
Yeah, I'm, I'm back now, I, I got nothing. I asked about the, the city standards, and that's when everything locked up. Can anybody help me with that?
Yeah, we, so Geneki brought it up to city standards, that's where they surveyed it, that's what all those various notations are around there.
Topographical.
I mean, it's, it's a heck of a different design than the original.
Too different, the bocce ball is on the same side, and the greenery is a little bit different, but they needed to do that for the ADA access.
Okay, okay, who did the-
There was another design that was substantially different, and that was rejected by the residents.
Okay.
Uh, this one here, you see how the bocce ball is on the opposite side, the ADA is on the intersection corner.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
And that was also done by Mr. Martin?
Uh, this one was, the one done by Mr. Martin is in black and white, then the colored items are by Geneki.
Okay, okay.
Right, so we hired a professional architecture firm. We did the topographical maps, so we could estimate the, the water flows and stormwater flows and so forth. That's what all the arrows are around the property, so, so this is ready for, ready for prime time, ready for bidding almost.
So this one, so it's, it's gonna be, this one showing now, correct?
Correct, this.
Okay.
With ADA on the west side.
Yeah, that makes a lot more sense, doesn't it? Okay, um, did you guys, did everybody ask, David and Shirley, did you ask the questions that you needed to ask?
Yeah. No, I haven't, I was just, I, I like the design itself, it looks like it's well balanced. What have is the access for handicap, whatever, fine. Uh, the tree that's on the point there, the one solo tree, I think, I don't think it's gonna, it's staying. I don't think it should be removed because of fire hydrant. I mean, the fire hydrant is gonna be using flexible hoses, so I don't think it's gonna be that big of a problem. I like to, I like to have this particular design.
Is, is the tree directly in, where, where's the hydrant in relation to the tree?
It's that circle, right there. So probably four to five feet away from the trunk.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if it's a functioning fire hydrant, it didn't work back in 2015, I believe, when there was a fire five houses down. The residents actually had to use their own water supply to and Commissioner Delgado could speak to that. I wasn't here at the time. It's a, oh, I don't know what kind of style you call it, it's just a pipe sticking up out of the ground.
Called a, it's called a wharf head.
Ah, I knew you'd know.
I was hoping, I was hoping somebody would say we were gonna replace it with a, with a better hydrant, with part of the, with part of the money.
Ah, attention. My dogs would like that.
Yeah, it's just, it's a long, it's not too bad, I mean, there's another crappy wharf hydrant on the corner across the street from Georgeius's house, but, I mean, that was the standard back then, and so.
I know it was in the summer.
Yeah, that's another bone in contention. Yeah, I, that's another bone in contention, I've got. Hydrants are supposed to be yellow, not gold.
And, and Scott, I, I also like the idea of the putting some kind of solar light out there. That'd be great. If we could work that in.
Oh, would that be over at, uh, by the, by the, by the hydrant?
Probably at the block. Yeah, I think enough for the, maybe barbecue at night or something like that, who knows? There's a lot of warm nights we have here. It'd be nice to have a, uh, a light out there at night if we needed it. And also for, for safety and, you know, uh, if anybody's there, at least it can be seen there. Somebody collapses or falls or something like that, they can be seen in the light at night.
Yeah, is, Dawn, do you think that's something, do you think we can find a, a solar type light that's gonna be bright enough to be able to light that up?
I, I do. I, I do. I think those are both great suggestions, and we'll definitely, uh, carry those ideas forward. Um, those are great amenities to consider. And since we will have the, uh, the thing dug up, it makes sense to replace the hydrant, uh, Scott, and, um, and I've seen those lights, uh, in several places. Uh, if we put them near the trees and the trees grow over the top of them, that's an issue, but, um, obviously, but, um, I think that's a, that's a cool idea. Let's, let's look into that. See how much it costs.
And, and the other thing too, uh, there was some talk about a, a, a sign in the park?
Uh, yeah, that'll be decided later. Uh, just looking out there, there are two, uh, streetlights on the circle, um, but the park area is completely dark at the moment. The lights pretty much just illuminate two houses.
Yeah, it is a dark circle.
A dark circle.
Uh, um, I, I was also under the impression we were gonna have, uh, the, the, the park was going to be named and, um, there'd be some type of signage. I thought it was gonna be named after Mrs. Farnie, but I hope I'm not wrong.
Uh, it just, the final naming hasn't been decided.
What does that, what, what does that mean?
Uh, the, just that we need to ask the family if they have any wishes, uh, particular.
We, we have families who've donated money to the city for the park and so forth, so we have to just verify. Um, I, ultimately, I think that may be a city council decision, the naming of the park, um, and that'll be a, probably a hearing of some kind. But, yeah, it's, it's still pending. It hasn't, it's, it has not been determined yet.
Okay. Okay, well, good. I'll see you.
If that, if that's the case, if that's the case, has there been a, a location where the sign's gonna go?
Uh, no, I haven't talked directly to the architect about that. We can do that too as well, so that's the third thing to add.
Might want to, might want to just set it up, um, have it ready for a name.
Right, right. And, and probably, you know, somewhere like along in here, or, or maybe on the, on the hardscape.
Yeah.
Cause the vehicles are coming, uh, from the bottom towards the top as they enter the, uh, the circle.
Uh, they come from the, uh, top corner by the four trees.
Or, or from here, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm upside down. Okay, yeah, I'm upside down. That's usual. So, that might be a good location then, right there. Okay.
Yeah, that would be visible from three directions, or two directions.
Yeah.
Um...
God, I think this is great utilization of that space, and I think all the residents there are gonna be very happy. I, I think it's really, really nice. Good thought then into that.
Yeah, Shirley, I totally agree with you. So, I grew up on Washington Street, right around the corner, and I spent hours, hundreds of hours in that circle playing hide and seek and whatever else, BB gun wars or whatever we used to do when we were younger. And, uh, um, it was odd to me that it used to have planter boxes in it with, um, some kind of funky cypress-type trees and, um, I know my Uncle Alan took care of that lot for years and years, and, um, and then all of a sudden it just all died and came kind of bleak. So, this, I'm super happy to see this part to, um, you know, get re, you know, new life. This is gonna be beautiful. So, yeah, I'm, I'm happy about this too, totally happy.
Um, so am I hearing correctly, we need to come back with, uh, options for lighting, where the sign will go and the hydrant question?
Um, I, there's, maybe the commission would, uh, go ahead and approve this design and, and we could bring it back, uh, when that decision is made. We, we could make that decision during the, the, the development of the, the building permit plans? I, I don't know. I, I was hoping we could move forward tonight. Is, how does the commission feel about, about, uh, allowing us to add us? If we can afford, if we can afford, uh, solar lights and, uh, and a new hydrant?
I'm good.
David, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good. Go forward with it tonight.
Absolutely, me too.
Yeah, I think all three of us are, are good to go on that one.
Cool.
Um, definitely. It's been, it's been a long time, so it's, it'd be nice, it's nice to see how fast you gotta, it didn't take you very long, Dawn, to get it moving, so we're, we appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome.
You know, it... So, uh, any more questions from the commission? Any questions from the audience on this, from the, uh, public?
I have one. This is Yolanda.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, um, on that drawing where the hydrant is, um, it's like too far away from the actual location. It's more to the end of the circle. It's not where the tree is. That's totally not where it's supposed to be. It's right there.
Yeah, out there.
Yeah. And, um, and instead of, and I have concerns with that tree there, like, um, um, the city planning was saying about the, the water. And it, and what Rochelle said in 2015, there was a fire, and that, it did not work, and, uh, my house, the, the, all the back fence got burned all the way to, um, uh, what is the, um, the, the, the woman that died, Phyllis?
Oh, no, Glenny.
Huh?
Oh, no. I was thinking Glenny, but I think it was Phyllis.
It was Phyllis' house burnt out because they couldn't turn that on, and they had to go to the top and with the fire engine. So, maybe that, uh, fire hydrant needs to be replaced, as Rochelle said. And, again, the light would be really pleasant because it's very dark on this cul-de-sac. That's it.
Thank you. Um, anymore from the public?
There was in the chat.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't use the chat, cause I don't know how...
Oh.
Brown act, I don't know how brown act, um, compliant it is, but what's, uh, what, can we, is there, can somebody maybe read what it is and...
Uh, EJ Sabathia says, "We're excited to see parks and public space improvements."
Great. Okay, thank you, EJ. Um, anything else? Any more public comment? No? Okay, since there's none, um, I guess we can move on to the commission, and just as a, as a, um, an old timer clarification, that's, uh, that house that got burned pretty good, or the backyard, that was Raymond C. Wilson's house. He was with, uh, he was the PE teacher and history teacher at San Juan School for like thirty-five years.
You're correct.
Yep.
And he gave that house to Phyllis for taking care of him.
Yes, he did, yep. Yep, he was a character. He was a heck of a, heck of a basketball coach.
Uh... Chairman, there is a, there is a resolution, um, as we did with the, uh, Veruti Park West Room. We're just asking the commission to approve a resolution, to take care of the CEQA and the other issues.
Yep, um, you know, if the commission doesn't mind, I'd like to, I'd like to, um, I'd like to move to approve this, if I could. Um, I'll go ahead and read the rela-, I'd like to move to, uh, resolve of, of the planning commission of the city of San Juan Batista approving a minor site and design review for the construction of a park in Franklin Circle.
With a comeback.
With, oh, yeah, with a comeback for the, uh, the lighting design and the sign design, and then, uh...
And the fire, and extinguish, I mean, the fire hydrant.
The hydrant, the hydrant.
And then, as far as the fire hydrant goes, maybe we can get ahold of, um, uh, our fire marshal, and maybe he can help us, you know, put it where he thinks is good. You know, if he, tell him where the tree's gonna be, maybe Charlie can tell you. Then it would be best to put it here or here. Um, if it's gonna be torn up, it shouldn't take much to do.
Right.
That's okay.
Right. Good idea.
I second it. I second it.
Thank you. For the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Awesome, thank you. Alright.
Alright.
Along. Discussion items, uh, commissioner appointment process update. Dawn, is that yours?
It is, Scott. Thank you, thank you. Um, I'm sad, sad to say, we're gonna, uh, we have two commissioners and HRB members that will be leaving at the end of the year. Scott, you're one of them. You're, you're moving to city council, and Shirley has decided not to, uh, not to re-up. So, I wanted to bring this to your attention. We, uh, shared this policy with the city council November seventeenth. They adopted a new process for appointing HRB planning commissioners. Um, so, we wanted to share the new appointment process with the current commission, and maybe ask that you guys help us recruit applicants, uh, for our two vacancies. Um, the applications, the advertisement for the applications have been posted at the library and, and post office and other places. Um, they are due back to us January twelfth. Um, the city council will establish an ad hoc committee, and the ad hoc committee will review the applications and then recommend, uh, uh, two from the pool of applicants, uh, for the whole consideration by the council for appointment. So, it's a little different than it used to be. And I've already talked to a couple members of the public who are interested in applying, so that's great. Um, but they weren't familiar with this new process of, it's kind of like a job application, and then having a little ad hoc hiring committee, uh, uh, from the city council. So, that's the process, and we just wanted to make sure that the planning commissioners were aware that it had changed, and, and just, uh, alert them, uh, and answer any questions that you might have about the process moving forward. Cause it's a little touchy, um, it, it may take a while, which is why we have a January twelfth deadline for the application. First of all, we're in the middle of the holidays, but secondly, um, council member Freels will not assume office until, uh, the December fifteen meeting, and at which time the council may or may not appoint this ad hoc committee. But, um, we have to wait for all of that to come together, so that the ad hoc committee can be appointed and then get to work. So, that's the process that the council adopted a few months ago and reviewed at their last meeting, and if the commissioners or the public have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them. That's all I have.
Commissioners, uh, David, you have any questions?
Uh, there's a portion in there that says about staggered. How does that work? The staggering, uh, I think it's, uh, item A. Uh, members of the planning commission shall be residents at sea.
Right, right. The, the intention with that is, is that, is that you have two appointed for four years, and then two years later, you have three appointed for four years. So, that way, um, you have either two new planning commissioners or three new planning commissioners staggered, at staggered times. Uh, that way, you're not appointing four or five commissioners all at once, and there's some continuity, uh, on the team as it moves forward.
That's it.
Yolanda, do you have anything?
Um, so we're not gonna be able to be on that ad hoc, is that correct, Dawn? Just the city planning commission?
Uh, city council, right, Yolanda? You will not be able to. Yeah, just city council.
And how do I direct people to, uh, apply? What is, or you guys haven't figured out how we're going to do it? Do they send up application, or they just throw their name in the hat? How is that going to happen?
We're seeking letters of intention, because there are some, you know, qualifications, why, why one person may be better qualified than another. Uh, maybe they have a historic, uh, resources background or architecture, construction. There might be special skills that they could bring to the commission. Um, so it's a letter of interest, and, and, uh, there is information on the website, Yolanda, uh, so we can direct people to our website to find, to learn more.
Okay.
Yeah, cool.
Shirley, anything?
Uh, no, I think it's, it's, I like this system a little bit better. I think it's a little more orderly, and I think it's gonna work out just very well.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I agree. It's, it seems like it's gonna be a little orderly. Um, the first time I applied for the planning commission was about fifteen years ago, and I had to stand up in front of the council, and basically, I had an interview in front of the city council. Fortunately, I've been through like four hundred fire department interviews, so I wasn't too nervous about it, but I just thought, wow, I'm getting raked through the poles here. And when this last round was pretty much an appointment and you're in, so, yeah, yeah, this is a little bit more scrutiny, so, um, but...
Yeah, that's, I, I think David and I went aboard against the board and did what you did, to just get, uh, nominated, right, Dawn? Didn't we go through that too?
Yeah, I, it was...
I did.
Yeah, I did too.
Yeah.
It was girly, girly, girly.
I was, I was...
It got too, it got too personal.
I was at the council meeting. I just happened to be sitting in the city council meeting, and, uh, Dan DeBree's, uh, called me up in front of the entire council to interview me too, Scott, so I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it, it was okay. It was, it was cool.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, nice that people actually care enough to ask the questions. Um, do we have any questions from the audience? Is there somebody out there?
Well, before we go to public comment, can I ask Dawn a question?
Sure.
Cause Scott is seated in December, how does that affect the, uh, ability to get a quorum for the January fifth planning commission meeting?
Well, we gotta make sure that Louis Machin can come, and if we have three, that's good. We'll need a unanimous vote from those three to get things approved.
I'd love the public to hear that, cause until new commissioners are appointed, um, I think it does have to be unanimous. You're right, yeah.
Right, so it, it is, uh, we can, we can get a quorum, we can have a meeting, and that was on my notes, uh, in the, at the end of the agenda today, to mention that we're looking at a, a January fifth planning commission meeting. Um, so, just giving folks a heads up tonight. Thank you for bringing that up, David.
Hey, can we go, anybody from the, the public have anything?
I didn't see any hands raised.
No? Okay. Okay, well, with that, I guess we can, uh, we're all good. We can move on to, uh, to the comments section. Um, David, do you have any comments?
Yeah, a little disappointed we're not getting a status report from the urban growth boundary, uh, ad hoc committee.
So, I haven't, we haven't, we haven't met since the last meeting.
You haven't met?
Not since the last meeting.
That's even, that even further disappoints me.
Well...
I, I was prepared to, I, I, I am prepared to touch base as on that. That, that was part of my comments.
Okay, um, uh, Yolanda, anything?
Uh, no, I have, I have nothing.
Okay, Shirley, do you have anything?
I just would like to say that it has been a real honor to be on the HRB and the, and the PC for the two and a half years that I was assigned to, appointed to fill the, a vacancy. It's been great. I've met some absolutely wonderful people, including those of you that are sitting right here. I just appreciated your support and your friendship, and I just have to say thank you to the city, because I really got to know David and Luis and Yolanda when we went down to San Diego to the Queen Mary and, and, you know, for, it was absolutely wonderful. We had a great time. Warren brought it back to the city, you know, so it's just great. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, Shirley.
Don't tell them the secrets.
I have nothing.
It stays on the Queen Mary. It's stayed.
What happens, what happens in Long Beach stays in Long Beach.
I like that.
Yeah. Um, I did, I just wanted to, uh, uh, same as Shirley, I wanted to, you know, thank you all for, um, uh, for, I've, I've been at, this is fourth year now, so I appreciate it all, and, you know, the most I appreciate is that as a lifelong resident in San Juan and somebody's, you know, six generations, S... as a lifelong resident in San Juan, and somebody's, you know, six generations SJB, um, I just appreciate you taking your time to volunteer and care enough, um, to help our town, it's, uh, we see so much apathy in the world now, and I just, I really appreciate it, and you, all, all four of you had so much passion behind it, which was, you know, it was humbling, so, um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, guys.
I'm frozen up again.
Looking forward to next year.
Yeah, everybody is, David.
I've locked up again.
Oh yeah, and I heard on the news-
I heard the page.
I heard on the news today, the first three hundred and sixty thousand vaccines have got to California, so we're working on the right direction, fingers crossed, everybody.
Damn it, I've locked up again.
Okay, um, uh, senior planner, David, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, just because, uh, we talked about it before, I wanted to let the planning commission know that I did review a notice of preparation for a fairly large residential development in the county's jurisdiction, um, Ridge, it's called Ridge Mark. It's off of Highway twenty-five, south of Fairview, so it's not necessarily near the city, um, but it's about three hundred houses on the existing golf course, which will be converted. So, um, since I know you're all interested in what's happening around you, you may wanna look into it, Ridge Mark Development with the county, Tempanillo County, um, the city, as far as I know, I advised, uh, City Manager Reynolds that I didn't have any comments, it wouldn't necessarily directly affect traffic within the city. There's no ability to collect traffic impact fees because the main access points are Highway twenty-five, not one fifty-six. Um, but, it will indirectly obviously affect the city if the EIR is prepared and the project's approved in the twenty months, so, just because I know you're all interested, um, you may wanna track that, and then, um, I think we are gonna try to plan to have a Gi, Gi, excuse me, January fifth meeting. Um, so, we're gonna need to make sure we get a quorum there between, I guess, Yolanda, David, and Luis, uh, if possible. But you'll get notification of that, and I think that's it for me.
Thank you, David, David, thank you for all your help over the last few years, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem, thank you.
Yep.
I, I can't find it.
City manager, Dawn, do you have anything, sir?
I am frozen again, right, you can't hear me?
Uh-oh. Is Dawn back in cyber, lost in cyberspace again?
Yep, I think I am, can you hear me?
I'm Dawn.
He's, uh, he's got his mic off.
Right, but I'm frozen again.
He's muted. Andy's frozen, hilarious.
Yeah? Am I back? Did that work?
What a year.
I'm still frozen.
We're going out with a bag.
This is, oh, you just, can't get fast enough.
First to Dawn, hello.
He's locked up again.
Yeah. Shut her down.
That's the way it should go on.
That's fitting.
Yeah.
Dawn says he's frozen again, and he'll send comments to the commission by email.
Okay, okay, well, thank you. Okay, all we need is, uh, a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
At least you can hear what's going on.
I second that.
Okay, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy holidays, everybody, happy holidays.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. We'll, and we'll, we'll see you out there.
I'll see you out there, Scott, walking around.
Okay, I'll see you, have a great night.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you, Shirley.
Thank you.
You too, Shirley, thank you, Shirley. I'll see you on the golf course.